Let's call the meeting to order and announce that we are at the City of Marshawn, City Hall Council Chambers at 10 West State Street. Today's date, September 28, 2020. It's 5:30 PM. If anybody has trouble hearing me because I'm going to try to do this wearing a mask the whole night, please raise your hand or indicate somehow that you're having that difficulty hearing me. We have people joining by tablets and computers and phones, and a couple of counselors today will have to be remote. At this point, I give a notice to the public that the mayor and council welcome comment from the public during discussion of the items on the agenda. You have to step to the mic, state your name and address for the record, limit your time to three minutes or less so others may be given an opportunity to speak as well. All speakers shall speak clearly and direct their comments to the mayor and council and not specifically to any counselor. It's at the discretion of the mayor and council to respond to specific questions and comments or have staff respond during that meeting. Now that we've been called to order, those who are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and through the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call for us, please?
Cahill? Cahill?
We know she's present by phone. There we go.
I'm here, yes, I am here. I'm just slow.
Goudy?
Here.
Hoop?
Here.
Isom? Martin?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Very good, thank you. We do have a quorum, and I think Mr. Isom may be on his way, too. It's time now for the mayor, council, and administrator comments, and let's amend the roll call to indicate that Mr. Isom is present.
I am late.
No problem. Glad you could make it. Before soliciting any mayor, council, or administrator comments, why don't we do the years of service first?
Did you hear me?
Do you?
David Ryerson, Marshawn Fire Department. So, I was supposed to have two people up here tonight, but unfortunately, one of them caught a fire call about a half an hour ago, and they haven't cleared yet, so he won't be here tonight. So, tonight, we're going to recognize Alex Needham, this gentleman right here. Oh, don't take it yet. And then Tyler Holmeyer, who couldn't be here. And both of these gentlemen were some of my first hires right after I became chief here, and they have both been excellent, excellent hires. Good firefighters and EMTs. Most recently, they've taken on the assignment of becoming FAA certified to fly our drone. So, any project I've had, these two have been willing to step up and become a part of the, part of it and a part of the change. So, with that, I'd like to congratulate Alex on his, on his five years, and I'd like to present him with his, his five-year department service pin.
Very good. Congratulations. Mr. Hubbard?
Jeff Hubbard, Park and Rec Director. I don't quite have a years of service, but I do have an award that I'd like to give one of our fine employees. Brad Weave actually won an award at the Iowa Park and Rec Conference through that association, but our spring conference was canceled, and so was our fall workshop, so we didn't really get together as a group to hand out awards. So, I'd like to introduce Steve Jordison, who's with the Iowa Park and Rec Foundation to give Brad his award.
I appreciate that. My name is Stephen George. I'm the CEO of Iowa Parks and Recreation Association, and we represent 100-plus municipal parks and recreation departments similar to the one that you have here in Marshalltown. And so, it's my pleasure to be here. As Jeff indicated, we were not able to have our conference, and we were not able to have our fall workshop in person, so very much like you were unable to have your Iowa League of Cities Conference a couple of weeks ago. So, where all of you give out your own awards, this is my opportunity to come on a local scene and give out Brad his award. And the T-Ray Frame Park Maintenance Award is given to an outstanding maintenance person with a Parks and Recreation Department who has demonstrated a high level of skill in his or her work. Goes beyond what would be considered adequate or expected in the position, shows a devotion on and off the job. This is a blue collar award, designed for an individual in a non-supervisory or a working supervisor position. I know, Brad, you've been doing that for, what, 40-plus years? So, the individual may be a full-time, part-time, or seasonal employee. You know, I could come up with comments because I've known Brad for over 30 years, but the one thing I think is most important is the nomination letter that Director Hubbard wrote on his behalf, and I'd like to read that if you please. Having worked for three different municipalities and being the director in Marshalltown for the last year, I've worked with many different parks' employees. There are some who show up each day and who do the minimum required to get the job done, and there are others who constantly go above and beyond what is required of them. Brad Weave, park superintendent in Marshalltown, is one of the latter. Brad has been invaluable in bringing me up to speed on all things parks related here in Marshalltown, and there has been a lot happening since the tornado several years ago that hit our town, as well as the deratio back in August. During the tornado recovery, he spent many hours cleaning up debris in the parks, city streets, and downtown buildings. He coordinated efforts with other city departments to make sure equipment, resources, and staff were available to get the job done efficiently and timely. All this while still maintaining other parks, trails, and facilities that weren't impacted by the tornado or the deratio. In this past year, Brad has managed several park projects, working with service clubs and volunteer groups to get those projects completed. He's very organized and communicates effectively with his employees and outside organizations needed to get the job done. I know he's getting close to retirement, T-minus four days and counting, but I'm hoping he enjoys his job and continues to work as long as he can because it's hard to find someone to fill his shoes. I present the T-Ray Frame Park, Outstanding Park Maintenance Award to your park superintendent, Brad Weave.
Like you mentioned, you know, for this, a lot of knowledge in the years I've been going to Iowa Park and Rec conferences. I really appreciated the help I got when I first started this job back in 1990. It was just, I went to the first one with the director then, and everybody was very nice, helpful, and they have been ever since. So, something I really enjoyed going to every year, and thanks to the city for letting, letting me go. And as far as retirement, yeah, it'll be 42 years last August, so I decided that this Friday's probably long enough, so that's, that's about all I need to say. I, you know, I'm not big on talking, so, thank you.
So, we don't, it's not really a milestone at 42, but we did want to recognize you for your 42 years of service. So, we have a plaque here saying, "I appreciate you for your dedication to public service." August 14, 1978. I was seven then. October 2, 2020. Thank you for over 42 years of service to the city and the citizens in our community.
Very good. At this time, then, let's switch to any comments to be made by the...
We also have the introduction of Carlos Jir.
I'm sorry?
The introduction of Carlos.
Oh, sure.
That's on the, the next item.
Yes, we do. Let's, let's go to the introduction of Carlos Jir.
I think I saw him...
Good evening. I'm Lynn Oldering, President and CEO of the Marshalltown Area Chamber of Commerce. I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to introduce you to our new Economic Development Director, Carlos Jir. Carlos has been with us since August 10, and I'm going to let him introduce himself and tell you a little bit about his background.
Well, thank you, Lynn. I appreciate that. For starters, I just want to say that I'm just happy to be here and thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself. I'm originally from Honduras, moved to St. Louis to study. I got my start out in politics, worked for the midterm elections in 2018, and then did some politics right after this cycle, '19 and '20. But most importantly, though, I worked in the St. Louis Regional Chamber, the hottest fifteen counties, the entire MSA of Greater St. Louis, and I did public policy there and investor relations. It was really attracting investors to the region and conveying a new narrative of what St. Louis had to offer, where someone could come, live, work, and invest and play. And so, we made that attractive to investors, so that's what I did for, for the chamber. So, now, at the, at the Marshalltown Area Chamber of Commerce, though, we are focused on attracting, retention, expansion, and housing. And so, in doing that, we are seeking to retain businesses that are already here, open and expand, and also bring in amenities. That's the attraction part that are very well, very well needed here in Marshalltown. So, just excited to be here. I'll be looking forward to connecting with each one of you personally, at a personal level, and I've already met, I've been introduced to Jessica, I've met Michelle, and Joel, too. So, that's actually grateful, but thankful for, thank you for allowing me this time to introduce myself. I appreciate it.
Welcome aboard, Carlos.
Thank you.
Any questions or other comments up here? Very good. Thank you also, Lynn. Okay. Now, let me try again for the counselor or administrator comments.
Your Honor, I just want to say that this last week, Ecklers, Shane and Christie, Christine, opened their new laundromat on Third Avenue, which is replacing the damaged one on Center Street. So, there is some good news, two years after the tornado, that some businesses are finally getting reopened, and I look forward to having them in my neighborhood and Sue's Ward and, and a part of the community, and also that it's a, it's, it's a good sign that other businesses will be following shortly. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Thank you for mentioning that, and that reminded me that last week was when we saw the McGregor Store open again and, opened their doors again to put furniture back into their flagship store. So, we are starting to see that now, a couple of years after the tornado. Very good. Other comments up here? All right. I don't have any further ones either, so it's time for the consent agenda. Before the meeting started, I was asked to pull items nine and 13 from it. Are there any other items anybody up here would like to pull from the consent agenda before I entertain a motion to approve it?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Also would like to pull number one, just for a clarification, number eight, and number Which, which two did you say earlier, nine and 13?
Nine and 13, yep.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. One, eight, 10, and 18.
All right, so, we add the 10 in there as well. I've got it that it will be everything except for one, eight, nine, 10, 13, and 18? If I, if my math was right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, with...
Thank you.
With those things pulled, or anybody else want to pull anything else? If not, is there a motion to approve the others, which would be two through seven, 11, 14 through 17?
I move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call?
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well, and then we go down to item number one. Madam Clerk, when able, would you read that one?
Would, would you like the clerk to read the list of items that were approved?
Oh, yeah. We usually do that first, don't we?
Thank you.
I've only got a year and three months left at this, and so I think I'm probably going to get kicked off of here before I figure this out. Please do read those items that were approved.
Approved liquor license renewals for the Central Iowa Fair at 1308 East Olive Street and Casey's General Store, number 3228, at 916 East Main Street. Approved the tree trimmer license for Johnson Lawn Care. Resolution authorizing a grant of $65,000 to Fairway Stores, Inc. for the construction of a new store. Resolution declaring certain property surplus, property, and authorizing sale and disposal thereof of a 2008 Sterling truck and a 2004 GMC truck. Resolution accepting the purchase of a 2022 International HV 507 Dump Truck with a snowplow and salt spreader for the price of $140,457 from O'Holland International for the use in the street department. Resolution approving Marshalltown Little League lease agreement for 2020 to 2023. Resolution approving the annual street financial report for fiscal year 2020. Resolution ordering construction of the East Main Street Drainage Improvement Project, SMW 200004, setting public hearing on proposed plans, specifications, form of the contract, and estimated cost, and directing publication of notice to bidders. Resolution set date for the public hearings on amendments to Series 2019 GOBON issuance. Resolution accepting the assignment of the development agreement for the Catalyst Building Grant and New Construction Incentive Grant from Garrett and Danny Goodman to United Bank and Trust. Resolution accepting the assignment of economic development tax increment payments for Marshall Graham Lodging LLC to Alvalia Bank. Resolution approving the purchase of a 2020 Dodge Pickup from McGrath Dodge. Resolution approving the facade grant application for 14 to 16 East Main Street, Marshalltown, Iowa. Resolution to approve building code upgrade grant application for 13 North First Street, Marshalltown, Iowa. Resolution certifying the population of annexed territory 2024, 233rd Street, Marshalltown, Iowa, to the State of Iowa Treasure. Resolution certifying the population of annexed territory parcel 8317-05-200-005, Marshalltown, Iowa, to the State of Iowa Treasure.
Thank you. And now, if I've got the right order, let's circle back to number one.
Approved minutes of September 14, 2020 meeting and the bill list of $4,871,123.82.
Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
A second, Your Honor.
Thank you. Discussion.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I was, I asked to pull this just for clarification. For example, there were three items to our attorney's, Lynch Dallas, that were showing up in three different categories, and if either the city administrator could let the public know why those were, or Diana, it doesn't matter to me which one.
Yeah, there, so one of their bills contained publication charges that they had paid on behalf of the city to the Times Republican, and then also some charges for title reports and things. And so, because those are separate line items that are in our accounting system, we code those items that are not actually legal fees to those line items, and so that's why you saw that they had legal fees as well as those two other things.
And then, Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
And Jessica and I have talked about, we'll talk more later, about somehow trying to figure out a better way to get this information out to the public and clarify it more so we can eliminate some of the questions. I mean, I'm not saying they're frivolous, but they're legitimate questions, but we just need to figure out a way to let the public know what we're spending money on. And thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Any other comments or questions or discussion? Anybody think we need to mute the phones, or unmute the phones for 15 seconds? Raise your hand.
Yes, I do, Your Honor.
Kind of hard to raise your hand and be recognized, isn't it? Okay. Let's start the clock when we're told everybody is unmuted. They're unmuted. Clock is running. And you didn't know you weren't the only hand that got raised either.
No, mine was raised.
Yep.
So, not only is Sue short, she's also invisible now? Is that what you're saying?
That's, she's hurt.
Your Honor, if you may, I don't have to handle a chainsaw, so be careful.
Did you hear that? Okay.
I didn't.
She said something about handling a chainsaw.
She threatened you, Your Honor.
She threatened me? Oh, okay. I'm used to that. All right. Well, our 15 seconds is up, so it's called roll.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Very good. That one carried, and I think we're on to number eight, resolution...
Resolution authorizing the police department to purchase police radio communication equipment and services from Raycom in the amount of $221,917.50.
I move for approval.
Second.
Discussion.
Your Honor, I, Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I was asked to pull this one. There was a member of the public would like to comment on this one.
Let's see. I guess in the right order, let's, yeah, okay. I'd ordinarily call for comment up here at the Diaz, or however you pronounce that, first, and if not, then it would be time for public comment. Seeing no one up here raising a hand, a public comment of this.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. So, I'm just looking for clarification. This money's coming out of the CARES Act, and that CARES Act is to replenish expenses which the city has had to expend that are unexpected for COVID relief, things like face masks, cleaning, overtime, stuff like that. And so, supposedly, we have a hole in our, in our budget or our general fund that needs to be, get filled with this money. Now, we're taking half of the money and we're going to, well, this isn't half yet, but a large sum of this money, and we're going to expend it on some other items which weren't planned to be purchased. So, we're actually, we've got a hole, we've got to fill it with state relief, but we're going to take part of that state relief and spend it on something other than filling the hole. So, I'm confused on how we can do that and still have a whole budget and not get taxed for it later.
Any other public comment? Let's go ahead and open up the...
The lines are open, Your Honor.
Lines are open. Start the watch again. Let's vote.
Horton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
That carried. Let's go on to the next item, which is number nine on the consent agenda.
Resolution authorizing a contract with Lansing Brothers Construction for the emergency abatement and of demolition debris not to exceed $120,000.
I move for approval.
Yep. Second.
Okay. Discussion on this one.
I just, I would like to question a couple areas of it. Announcing the cost of it ahead of time, does that skew the, how much they can, can get? And number two is, how are we going to recover that money?
So, the, this is written, you notice there is not a contract that's officially attached here. This is written with authority not to exceed $120,000 to provide a cushion on an informal quote that I have. I've asked for a formal quote, which I did not have before tonight, and there is still some additional time on this project as well. So, so basically, there's a little bit of extra authority there if something were to happen along the way, but the intent is to establish a contract with Lansing Brothers Construction for, for debris cleanup and an abatement of a nuisance.
Any other questions or comments by the council?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
The second part of the question?
I guess I don't remember. What was the second part? I'm sorry.
How to recover the money.
Oh, so this is one that we would, we would do a special assessment process once we had been fully billed for it, and if it was not paid within 30 days of being billed by the city. So, there, there is a process for recovery there.
Other comments by the council? Let's open the mics. Thank you. Let's vote.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. That one carried as well. Now, we're on to the 10th item that was originally on the consent agenda.
Resolution approving an agreement with Bolton and Mink for professional services related to the creation of a quiet zone.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted this off the consent agenda so I can make a negative vote on it. Thank you.
Okay. Other discussion up here? 10, let's go 10 seconds on this one.
The lines are unmuted, Your Honor.
Okay. That's it. Let's vote.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Thank you. That one carried as well, and so now we're on to number 13. One ready?
Resolution ordering construction of the South 12th Avenue Sidewalk Project, TRL 19002, setting public hearing on proposed plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost, and directing publication of notice to bidders.
Solicited a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
Discussion.
My question here would be for Justin, and I'm on a record as opposing this five-foot sidewalk, but I question the sidewalk going down Olive. The location, is it south of the poles or north of the poles, or how's that going to command to play?
I don't know the plans well enough. I will have to defer to our design engineer from Clapsettle and Garber, but I know that there is enough space to make it work.
Heather Thomas, Clapsettle, Garber, 16 East Main Street. On Olive Street, the sidewalk will be north of the power poles that are closest to the road.
I can't...
I had trouble hearing you, too. Sorry.
Sorry. The sidewalk will be north of the power poles along Olive Street.
North of a string of poles?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Other questions or comments by the council? If not, let's go ahead and unmute the lines again.
The lines are unmuted, Your Honor.
We're going 10 seconds again. Time is up. Let's vote.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Carried as well. Let's go on to the final one that was on the original consent agenda. This is number 18.
Resolution accepting a grant from the U.S. Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration for the Edgewood Extension and Flood Mitigation Project in the amount of $2,956,849.
Move for approval.
Second, Your Honor.
Discussion.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I asked that this one be pulled off. Yes, I love the fact that the federal government is going to give us $3 million, but I just wish we had knowledge of what development is going to take place on this new street before we build a street for no reason, is all I wish we had ahead of time. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions by the council? Let's unmute for 10.
You're unmuted, Your Honor.
Thank you. 10 it is, let's vote.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill? Cahill? Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Very good, okay, next thing on the agenda is motions, but there aren't any of that, so then we go on to K, which is reports, and the first item under that.
Chamber of Commerce Housing Study Follow-Up.
Great, thanks, Jessica. Uh, my name is Joe Carter, I'm a 25-year resident of Marshalltown, living at 610 Elmwood Drive. I have the honor of leading Marshalltown Company, a 130-year-old world-leading manufacturer of construction tools. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to address the City Council this evening. Uh, tonight, I'm here representing the Chamber as the Vice Chairman. I'm also a member of a local group called Industry Leaders. The Industry Leaders represent many of the largest employers in the community, uh, and these companies are leaders in their respective industries. Uh, this group includes JBS, Emerson, Lennox, Raycom, MechDyne, Stover Controls, and Unity Point Health. So again, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. There have been several community members and groups talking about pushing more growth for Marshalltown, and to see this community thrive in the future. Both the Chamber and our Industry Leaders Group have made a growth, have made growth a major goal. I know that Vision Marshalltown has done the same thing. Whoops, that didn't work. Jessica, maybe I could just have you advance the slide, thanks.
I can do that.
If we want a growing, more thriving community, we found that the need to increase our housing options, especially single-family homes, is critical. So, if we could go to Slide 3, so the Chamber created a housing committee first, uh, and that committee hired McClure with the cities, your vocal and financial support, as well as the Chambers, to understand the challenges and to develop a strategy for increasing our housing options in Marshalltown. Uh, we, we contracted with McClure in February of 2020, and more recently, after seeing McClure's strategy proposal, the Chamber Board has approved dedicating $250,000, that is $2,500 per home for 100 homes, for a portion of the homebuyer incentive that McClure has proposed. So the Chamber Board has already done that. If we get this proposal launched and moving, the Chamber wanted to be a leader in supporting the effort, and we couldn't imagine a better way than to put our money where our mouth was. Because the city was gracious enough to partner with the Chamber in paying for McClure's work, the Chamber asked me to update you this evening with where we are so far with McClure, and to present the McClure proposal so you can see the first part of what you're paying for. I will cover the meat of the proposal, but I believe that Lynn Olberding, the Chamber's President and CEO, will be getting the mayor and each of the council members a copy of the McClure report, uh, very, very soon. I apologize that we didn't get that to you ahead of time. Uh, next slide. McClure explained to us that there is a housing shortage in the United States, especially for micropolitan communities such as Marshalltown, as well as even smaller communities. We need developers and we need builders. They further explained to us that communities like ours are riskier for developers and for builders because the profit margins on homes are smaller, and there is a smaller demand than big cities offer with their larger populations. Finally, as McClure looked at our community, they realized that we have virtually no shovel-ready lots, uh, and we have no incentives that drive housing growth. So McClure told us that if we're going to solve this housing shortage issue, we need to put the initial focus on developers, on the developers. We can try to find existing developers here and elsewhere who would be willing to take the risk. However, because finding any or enough developers to solve our housing shortage has been difficult in the past, McClure suggested that we create our own 501(c)(3) organization to act as developer as well, and we are in the process of doing that. A developer must buy land to initiate a project, so if we use a local 501(c)(3), we'll need to find donors to fund that purchase of any land. We've already started some of those donor conversations, and those will continue. The Chamber and the Housing Committee have been doing that. After the purchase of the land, the developer needs to grade the land and put in streets and utilities according to the way the land is platted or designed. Uh, that infrastructure work must be funded somehow. Again, McClure explained that we have various options, like we do with the land purchase. Uh, McClure gave us proposed options, and the one that impacts this group, the group that I'm speaking in front of, would be possibly using TIF for infrastructure costs, so I want you to be aware that's in, uh, their proposal. So how does TIF fit in? A residential TIF works in a unique way, in that funds are split depending upon a community's demographics. So currently, in Marshalltown, uh, the funds would be split 60/40. 60% to repay the infrastructure cost, and 40% to be used to fund low-to-moderate income housing. Uh, so that will, uh, if we can make this happen, I actually will, if we build, uh, homes that are 180,000-plus, uh, is what our hope is to do, uh, there will also be money coming back in those, under those TIF funds to help us with low-to-moderate income housing. Part of McClure's proposal spends time on this issue, but utilizing their numbers. If we say that this housing initiative builds 100 homes, and that the average assessed valuation of those homes was $225,000, McClure's examples show that we would see 2.1, $2.1 million in repayment of the infrastructure, and then 1.4 million for the LMI housing. So they've got that in that document, uh, and I think really laid out, uh, not only in the body of it, but also in the appendix. So, uh, very, very big picture. If we build new homes and we build the infrastructure with TIF, residential TIF funds, we'll see a 60/40 split on that. 60% to repay the cost for infrastructure, 40% going to low-to-moderate income. Besides incentivizing developers, next McClure proposes that we incentivize builders and homebuyers. If our 501(c)(3) is the landowner, we can control the prices on lots and could offer to hold the cost of the lot until the home is sold. It's one of the, two of the things that they, uh, recommend. To incentivize buyers and helply quick, and, I'm sorry, to incentivize buyers and help builders sell the homes more quickly, McClure proposes a cash incentive in lieu of tax abatement of $10,000 per home. As I mentioned earlier, the Chamber has already agreed to put in a quarter of that amount. We have not yet requested funds for this homebuyer incentive from anywhere, anyone else, so we haven't started that process, but we intend to. I also want to mention that when we first met with McClure, they made a point of emphasizing that we need to be inviting to these developers and builders if we're going to make this happen. If we create incentives and we get builders and developers attracted, McClure said we need to be great, and I emphasize the word "great" to work with when it comes to applications, permits, codes, inspections, et cetera. I'm confident that Marshalltown will make that happen, but they made that clear that it's critically important that we do that. We got to be better, as, as good or better than every other community in the city of, or in the state of Iowa, uh, to make that really work and prosper. McClure still has more work to do, uh, so as, so do we, as the Housing Committee from the Chamber, but we wanted you to get this update. Uh, it's hot off the presses, uh, because the bulk of McClure's work has been done. They've got a few more things they've got, need to finish up before we're paying them in full, uh, but, uh, I think the report is, is well-done, and I think you'll enjoy getting through that, but that's the synopsis to it. So, thank you for your time, and I would take any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions up here from the council?
Yes, Your Honor. Um, do, are you aware, Mr. Carter, of any other Iowa communities that have done the CDC, um, model?
There are. Newton is one we know well of, uh, they, in the report, you'll see that they talked to at least four other communities, uh, looking at what they've done to, uh, to develop more housing in those communities. Newton is one, they have a, a development corporation that, uh, is funded in that same way.
Thanks.
So they're one example. I, I know, my hometown of Spencer had a $10,000 incentive for first-time homebuyers as well, that worked very well up there. I think, I think they're in the list of people surveyed.
Other questions or comments up here?
Your Honor?
Your Honor, I have a question.
Go for it.
Joe, thank you for coming before us and sharing this information. As a building provider yourself, how would you rate the city on those characteristics of being, um, basically friendly to the developer? You have developed a property, how are we doing at this point?
We can be better.
Can you share in what areas we can be better?
Uh, I, I'm not going to do that publicly, because I don't think that makes good sense, uh, but there are some areas that we can get better. And, uh, you know, and I'm fortunate, because, uh, we're residents, have been residents here for a long time, and I think, uh, we probably get some benefit from that, from the people that we work with. But in speaking with our contractor, I know he's had to, uh, do some things that he wished he wouldn't have to have done, and, and maybe called in, uh, some, uh, some requests to try and get some stuff done. Obviously, we don't want to step over the line, right? We want to have things built according to code, and we want to do things properly, but I, I know we're in the works of trying to change what we're doing on the International Building Code, uh, and working with the Consortium of Des Moines, uh, and so I think that some of those things are a step in the right direction, and so I would, I, I think, Sue, I think the proper way for me to frame it is, is we can get better, but I think the forces are in play to already try and do that, uh, but I, I just don't want to lose sight of that. I, I think we work hard to do what we're doing, uh, the last thing we'd want to do is then don't do a great job on all the follow-up and, uh, and, and doing those sort of things. But I, but I, I think we're good. I think we could be great.
No, I appreciate your candidness on that, Joe, thank you very much. I guess I also want to say, you were looking at properties at the $225,000 mark. Is there that market for the 100 to 150,000-dollar houses? Where does that? I, I talked to someone this past weekend who has a property that had been damaged in the tornado, they have demolished the home, and they have a lot for sale, but they are not having any luck, um, selling an individual lot. How does that fit into the plan that has been developed?
Yep. Uh, in, in what McClure did in speaking with, uh, builders, uh, that they found that, uh, most of the builders they're going to talk to, uh, are going to build a home for, likely in that 200-plus range, I think the number was 225,000. Uh, that's, uh, very, very common in what these builders are looking to do. So I think, uh, Sue, I'm not surprised by, uh, you know, the example that you go, gave, that story that you give, I think that's tough. But I also think that's where, uh, why I wanted to spell out, uh, more specifically with the residential TIF, uh, how this can help. So if we create a big development, these builders are going to want to come in and build a home that's $200,000-plus, that's highly likely, and I think we'll see that demand. Uh, if we're really going to drag in, uh, commuters, uh, from, um, outside the area, I think, uh, our number's something like 22% of the people who work, uh, in town, uh, commute from more than 40 miles away, it could be 30 miles away, but I believe it's 40 miles away or further. And our hope is that we have more housing options, we're going to then, um, get more of those people to move to this community, and I think some of the things that we've already seen are, are leading us in that direction. But those homes are likely going to get built at a higher value than what you're talking about. Uh, but if we do this, and then we build infrastructure, uh, through TIF funds, we'll see some money come back, and it's pretty significant money, uh, for low-to-moderate income housing, and then in the report, it very details, uh, how it's some ways we can, uh, utilize some builders to potentially do exactly that, help those situations with infill lots, uh, maybe even some larger, but it could be multifamily homes, could be single-family homes, and then we're looking to hit those sort of price points, or maybe even a little bit lower than what you're talking about, Sue. Does that answer your question?
Thank you very much, Joe.
You bet.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, Joe, I'm impressed. Um, I was wondering when this report was going to be coming to us, so I appreciate it. Now, you know, we offered up to pay half of the implementation fee, do you have a, a feeling on that yet?
Uh, yeah, which is, which is phase two, right? And, uh, uh, we're going to hold off, uh, until we get all the work from McClure. Obviously, it's taken much longer, I think we were expecting this report by the end of April was what the beginning wa, uh, what the beginning assessment was, and then COVID struck, and, uh, we've got all sorts of excuses, uh, but whatever they are, here we are today, finally in late September, so it's much later than we expected, but we really want McClure to finish up with their report before we give them any, any inclination as to where we want to go from here.
Well, I've got, without seeing the report, I've got to believe there's a lot to digest.
Yep, there is.
I, I guess my biggest question is, um, with one of your counterparts, they really thought that this was the impetus to grow Marshalltown's population to 50,000. I don't think that's realistic. However, um, I have to believe, and I agree with Sue, we have a lot of infill development that needs to happen to be a viable town. The infrastructure's already in place in those places. I've got to believe that most of the builders that McClure is going to put us in touch with, or a CDC will put us in touch with, are going to want to come in and use economy of scale and build a neighborhood, it, which isn't going to help us in the long term unless we do implement that TIF plan. Am I correct in that assumption? That it, they, they're looking at, when you say there's aren't enough shovel-ready lots, they want development like Cross Country Estates, or South Point, or similar to what you're doing yourself? Is that correct?
Yeah, I, I think the sh, uh, short answer is yes. The longer answer is, is, uh, you're 100% right, these developers want to come in, or builders want to come in and really be able to develop an entire area, and, uh, so that, that becomes a problem. Trying to build one home on an infill lot is difficult for them to say, boy, that's worth my time, that's worth my money, the risk is high. Uh, so, you know, it's one of the discussions we had, uh, for quite some time on this report, and trying to get good information from McClure about that, because we see that as a need. You know, talking to JBS on the north end of town, how, you know, how are they going to deal with it? So, we've all got the issue, uh, and there's not easy answers, because builders are not just clamoring to do a lot of those types of homes.
Now, I just want to say I'm impressed, the 250,000 commitment from the Chamber.
Uh, we, we're strongly in, in belief that this can happen and, and do a world of good, and, uh, everything else that we're seeing going on, certainly our project at Crosby Park, it wouldn't be part of any of this because it's multifamily housing, uh, there's zero question, we're seeing with the units there, we're bringing people to town, uh, they're getting filled by people who, uh, you know, wouldn't otherwise necessarily move to town.
And that leads me to my last question, if I may, Your Honor?
You may.
Is, do you, does your organization have a list of people that want to move to Marshalltown that we just don't know about it, or, or is it if we build it, they will come mentality?
Yeah, uh, none of the residents at Crosby Park are, uh, people that I was associated with, um, so, I, I think the answer is no, and we certainly don't want to put that sort of pressure on our employees, or, you know, any other employees, but I think it really is, uh, we build it, they'll come.
So you, you trust these numbers that McClure's coming back with?
I, I think they're small, I think they're, uh, um, I think they're being conservative.
Okay.
So, yes, I trust them, I just think they're being conservative.
Thanks, Joe. Thank you, Your Honor.
Other questions up here? Uh, let's go ahead and unmute the mics for 10 seconds.
The lines are unmuted, Your Honor.
Thank you. Well, I started about eight seconds ago. We've hit the 10 seconds, so it's been fun to watch, uh, Janelle and Joe Carter with the development going up on Sixth Street at Crosby Park. I, I know you addressed this years ago, saying you were going to put part of the, your retirement plan into, you know, put the money where your mouth is and, and build and see what happens, and then if it succeeded well enough, you would duplicate, triplicate, and obviously, it's doing well enough to do that, so that's got to be a spark like it, nothing else around this town, to get developers to figure, okay, well, it worked for Carter's, let's, uh, let's see what, what they can do too, so. I sure appreciate that, it's fun to, fun to drive by there.
Thank you for saying that, but, uh, 99.9% But 99.9% of the credit has to go to my wife, who's not here tonight. I think she might even be listening online, but she's doing all the work.
She is. Her name's listed on our list, and she's done a remarkable job. And I know that from the guy that came to clean our carpet here recently, that often goes out there and compliments what a job she's done here. So I had to give her a shout out for that, too.
Thanks.
Thank you. That's a good report. Okay, we are now skipping resolutions because there aren't any. And so we're down to item J, ordinances. Would you read the first and only one of those?
Ordinance 15003, approving the rezoning of city property along East Southridge Road to R-2A Low Density Residential.
First reading.
I move for approval.
Second, Your Honor.
Let's go with Martin on the second. Okay, discussion.
Yes, Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. This is a rezoning of a small portion of land that the city owns, which is adjacent to the longer strip along East Southridge, which is already currently zoned R2A. So that's for that low-density housing. The piece in particular that we're talking about rezoning right now is this small section in blue here and basically right adjacent to the driveway that goes into the park entrance. So this little section is currently zoned Planned Unit Development, PUD. And so we are wanting to make that the same zone as the adjacent property, which is part of the overall purchase that we have before you previously at a council meeting for that land. And so we just want to make that all consistent with the same zoning classification. The R2A district allows for single-family attached and single-family detached housing, so your traditional single-family home, as well as a duplex option. I think the proposal that we have before us is to do single-family detached housing, so the single-family individual home. The Planning Commission did review the request, held a public hearing, and recommended approval of the rezoning request to the R2A. So this is the first reading. We do have scheduled for a public hearing by the ordinance for your next meeting, October 12th, and would ask that you consider waiving the third reading following that second reading in order to help meet the due diligence period that we're looking at for the sale of the property.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Michelle? Public comment? Let's tell me one to start here.
So this is Kirk Jensen. Is, does that represent one lot? Or how many lots does that represent for the developer?
So that does not necessarily represent a single lot. Where exactly those lot lines will fall among the complete stretch of land we have not finalized yet. The final plat will be coming before the council and the Planning Commission in October, and that's when we will have all the actual lot lines determined. The minimum lot size in the R2A is 65 feet wide, 8,000 square foot in area. And so it will have to, the lots will have to meet those minimum standards, and we are expecting them to be pretty close to that range in order to maximize the amount of ground available for development.
Kirk, can you please state your address for the record?
My address is 2607 Leland Court.
Thank you. Other public comments or questions? Okay, I think that's been open about a minute. Let's go ahead and call for vote on this one.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill? Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Cahill, I don't care what the politicians tell you, you're only allowed to get to vote once. All right, on to the next item. That one carried. So we're...
Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. I thought I heard you say yes twice. That's why I had to poke fun at you. You're taking a lot of guff tonight. You'll have to be here next time just to protect yourself. Okay, discussion items. The first one is the discussion of the rewrite of the City Zoning Ordinance, RFP, Request for Proposal.
Yes, thank you. Michelle Spahnheimer, again, Housing Community Development Director. We had a discussion about this item, well, a couple different times in recent history as we've talked about potential budget and strategic planning goals. Our zoning ordinance is an ordinance that we have been working with for many years. Original ordinance was done in 1957. We had a major overhaul in the late 90s, early 2000s of it. And we have really just kind of pieced through things on a staff level as much as possible as we've done updates over the years and adjusted as things change from legal perspectives to trends and whatnot. So it really is time for us to relook at our zoning ordinance in its entirety and try to take into consideration some of those things that have changed, make sure that we are compliant with all those various aspects, and also accounting for the changing trends we see in planning today. So we are, would like to request the council's approval to move forward with a request for proposals. We're proposing that this would be funded through local option sales tax funds. We don't know the exact amount. That's one of the things that we will be asking for as part of the proposal is a price submission that would then also be able to be negotiated through that process as we interview and select. So we are looking at a significant process when doing a zoning change of this magnitude. I expect that it would take some significant time to work through not only evaluating our current codes, public engagement, and proposing new draft language. So this is a significant project, but a one that I believe will be very helpful for us in many ways, as well as hitting right on the things that Joe just talked about in terms of being ready for development in our community.
Thank you. Any questions or comments by the council?
Your Honor?
Your Honor, I have a comment.
Go ahead, Ms. Cahill.
Thank you. I appreciate Michelle bringing this forward because I have probably had more comments from constituents in the last two or three months than I've had in my time on the term, on the council. And that revolves around how we are policing our ordinances and if we are doing them equitably. If someone gets called on, the nuisance officer calls on them, they're like, okay, but what about this property that is not coming up to the same standards? So I believe that this look at our policies, at our zoning ordinances will help us be able to do a better job of equitable enforcement of our ordinances. And again, I don't think that it should be just like if someone calls on you, you are turned in to the nuisance officer and suddenly have an issue. It should be equitably enforced so that I would support this type of work that would look at our ordinances and make sure that we are equitably enforcing them across all of our, the districts and all of our residents in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson, I think you had your hand up as well.
Yeah, I just want to say, Michelle, I was just going to echo what you said. The timing is right for this. It's long overdue, and especially what the chamber has done and just what you said, what Joe just said. And this may be the answer to what Sue and I talked about in first ward of those smaller lot development. You know, if we can write into the ordinance some tiny house stuff, where we can get a house that fits the neighborhood for the money. You know, no one's going to build a $225,000 house next door to me. Okay? You know, it's just not going to happen. So I'm all for this. I'm curious to see what we get back for numbers. Hopefully, that's not a deal breaker. But the time's right, you know, where we can do some, you know, you know, mother-in-law homes, you know, the shared lots, the tiny homes, the...
Accessory dwelling units is the trending term.
The politically correctly to put it.
The ADUs, yes.
Well, yeah, I support this big time. If we don't rule, just we go wide open and, like Sue said, get some clear-cut things out there where we can stop some of this petty stuff between neighbors, too.
Yeah, certainly. And just to kind of clarify as well, we're not talking about necessarily looking at specifically the nuisance codes with this right now. And that is a separate section of the municipal code from the ordinance. But we do have a lot of zoning-type items that often cross boundaries.
I think what she's getting at is the person that has the 27-car garage next door to their two-car garage and...
Yep, absolutely.
Getting away with it. You know, no one knew they built it, you know, things like that. So, thank you, Your Honor.
You bet. Thank you. Other questions or comments by the council? If not, tell me one that's open mic and we'll open it to the public.
All lines are unmuted.
Okay. Let's go 10 seconds again. Michelle. Okay, so much for public comment. Does the staff need any more direction than just this discussion?
I guess we would probably just ask for a motion just taking to move forward.
I'll solicit that motion.
So moved.
Second, Your Honor.
I don't anticipate any more discussion on this one. Let's just go ahead and call a roll.
Warren? Yes. Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Very good. You've got your direction.
Thank you.
The next discussion item is IEEDA Downtown Revitalization Grant Application.
Yes, Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director, again. So this is another item, kind of talking about development and specifically in our downtown. And Julie Winter, who's from Region Six Resource Partners, is also here, and she may present some other, more details on the program, but I wanted to kind of start off our discussion. Obviously, as you all know, the tornado had a tremendous impact on our downtown, and we have a lot of buildings downtown that need various levels of facade work, both pre-disasters as well as post-disaster that were impacted. And the Iowa Economic Development Authority has a grant program for downtown revitalization that they put out every year. And we are trying to, in preparation for next year's round, think about this process because it is a very lengthy and extensive process in preparing an application. Like many of our grant applications, you know, we may work on, and there's a lot of narrative and some details and data that goes along into an application. This one is a little bit different in that it does require a lot of work done by professional design folks, architects, to work with property owners and come up with the plans for what a scope would look like well in advance of a submission. And so we wanted to first come to the council to have some discussion about interest in participating in this grant. The grant is a $500,000 amount of grant funds that does require a one-to-one match. There is an owner contribution component to that as well. And we are looking for the council to support that matching amount. There is a discussion of looking for other local sources through foundation funding to also support that if possible, but certainly those are not guarantees as well. And so we did want to, I wanted to bring forward the idea of supporting in next, it would be in next fiscal year, so I wanted to get this on before we got into budget. Think about for the next fiscal year, supporting up to a $500,000 matching contribution to this grant coming from what we were proposing, I think, local option sales tax as the most likely source of funding. And so I do have, Julie, if you want to maybe come up and present a little bit more?
Yeah, yeah. I guess first off, I've seen people do this in various ways. Can you all hear me with the mask on?
No.
No?
I have to admit, it's easier for me to watch your lips.
Okay, I will go ahead and take it off for this then. Julie Winter with Region Six Resource Partners. As Michelle mentioned, we are considering pursuing the Downtown Revitalization Grants. It's a grant from the Iowa Economic Development Authority. I think of this, my office works with communities in our four county area. We've had several communities who have been successful in this in general with the need that we see in Marshall Town. Again, as Michelle mentioned, following the tornado, as well as even prior disrepair that's gone on in the downtown. Marshall Town would be an excellent community to have this grant be considered. So the grant is for $500,000, and generally then you would have to match that. We do have to get at least eight interested downtown building owners in the downtown in order to qualify. So far, we've done some initial investigation, just one-on-one meetings with building owners downtown. We definitely have at least eight. I can say positive conversations for nine right now who would be interested in the match as well as they have qualifying scopes. That number could change because, again, this grant is very detailed in that you go to the property owner initially, you ask them, what do they want to see? How can we really help to improve the downtown area? And then from there, we would work in more detail with an architect to really develop the budget for each property and the scope that the property owner wants to see. I do think it's important. It's not 100% money. Each property owner would have to put in 20% of their construction costs. So there is skin in the game for them. And in general, when I've seen other, other communities who have gotten this grant, it is a huge catalizer in the downtown. It is a large sum of money for council to consider, but I will say it's going to help a lot of property owners go in the correct direction and to really help revitalize the downtown. General timeline that we'd be looking for, the grant is not due until July of 2021, but it will take us quite some time to start preparing the grant and to see what the scope would really be. So there's a lot of unknowns as we develop the application. So I'm happy to consider any questions you all might have. I sit down.
I have one question.
Your Honor?
Sure.
I have a question.
Ms. Cahill, you have the floor. Go ahead.
Julie, thank you very much for sharing this information. Can you tell us how this differs from the other grants, whether it is a facade grant or a catalyst grant that we have received from the state after the tornado? Is this more inclusive? Or how will we, I think I read that you look for maybe eight to 10 projects that come forward with this? Will someone who qualified for a previous grant be able to add on to their grant from an additional grant perspective? Thank you.
Yes, Sue, two things that I hear from your question. One thing I'm hearing is maybe the city facade grant. This is much different from the city facade grant in that these could be huge scopes of work. The average scope per building can be $60,000 according to the state, but I've seen scopes range into $150,000 and more, depending on what needs to be done for the building. Very building-dependent and very property owner-dependent for which way they want to go. The catalyst grant was a grant that Marshall Town got for the special allocation of that, and that can cover lots of different things. It could not cover interior?
I would say the catalyst grant was meant to be something that was going to be driving economic development in the downtown. And facades alone were generally not seen as something that was going to change that. So it was more for projects that were creating housing, creating business, creating taxable value. value.
Thanks, Jessica, for that clarification. I will say, though, this grant is not just putting a pretty face onto a building. I think we can see, I can think of several examples in the downtown that if they got a facelift on the front of the building, they could see much more increase in potential rental values, less vacancy in the downtown. There are many things that can happen with that. In fact, property values of building owners do increase generally when this grant happens. And we saw in another community I just worked with, the vacancy rates went down significantly in the downtown as well. So even though it is targeting facade, qualified work can include pretty much anything you can see from a Main Street that's considered Main Street or in your downtown area. That can be windows, doors, storefront areas. It can include upper-story windows, which could be a gateway to upper-story housing. It can include any brickwork, tuck pointing, those kinds of things. In some cases, for some of the tornado-damaged building, there needs to be some demolition of facade coverings from the buildings, and that can be included as well, which would then lead for a whole revitalization of the building fronts, so.
Thank you, Julie.
So some of the professional services that were discussed, that's gonna be going into identifying the scope of work and otherwise, where is that funded through? Or how is that, who's paying for those services?
So traditionally, the cities fund that. However, thanks to generous contributions from the Martha Ellen Ty Foundation, we are able to fund that front-end work. That would be for architectural services that it takes to get the scopes, renderings, and budgets together. So those would not be required by the city to fund. We have a separate funding mechanism for that.
Can I ask a question of what that would normally look like from a funding, from a dollars' perspective that's not coming out of the city's pocket? Or would traditionally come from the city's expense?
Anywhere in between $10,000 to $20,000, depending on the buildings and the scopes.
I know that Iowa Economic Development people were pretty excited about the prospects for second-story housing in Marshalltown, so this is kind of right in that bailiwick, too, is it?
Yes, yes, because this can definitely help to repair the outside of a building. And then after this project is done, then you can use other funds to help a property owner get to the inside.
Thank you. Other questions up here by the council?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Two questions, Julie. Thank you, first of all, and then Michelle. Where's, where's the grant out there for sprinkling everything downtown? I think that's the biggest need to get upstairs rental properties in, you know, bring us that grant, and we'll jump on board. The other one is, if this one isn't due until, you said, July of 2021, we're talking, these funds would be available for 2022 then? We're that far out? So we're, again, we're looking at four years from the tornado before we even, these people even think about touching their buildings?
And it's true. So some of these, I think, when my office initially started considering this prospect, we identified different buildings that may have unmet needs, either tornado or otherwise. Some of those buildings may drop off, needs may be met, but I think for the folks who are willing to stick it out for a large revitalization project, to have part of that covered that they wouldn't normally do, I think those are the property owners that will be in it for the long term. So folks are willing and able to go about their own. They have their other funding sources through the city facade grant that they could get a smaller amount of money if they chose to try to apply for that. And I have talked to property owners who intend to, to address their needs before then. So that's a reality, but there, there are quite a few as well who are very excited about this funding, so.
Thank you.
Was your other question regarding timeline and why we're so...
I just want to make sure I understood that, that I want to make sure I heard you say that the deadline for the grant wasn't even until July. You won't even get an answer till, what, November, right?
Probably more like fall. I'd say mid-September.
Yeah, and then...
Work to start following spring.
Right, and the implementation goes in in 2022. Wow, okay. Thank you.
We're cognizant that some building owners, that may not be their timeline, so trying to be as upfront as possible with everyone that that is the timeline, so.
And this, this grant is, there's no way it can be retroactive. I mean, they can't do, they have to wait.
Right. But if they wanted to do work on their property prior to the, say, if there are interior improvements that need to be done, they can try to target other improvements and then hold out for that facade grant to, to finish their needs.
Then my only, my only other question was, where's that sprinkler grant? You looked at Michelle like there's something in, there isn't.
The code upgrade grant is the, that's the best game in town right now, so far as I know.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Other questions by the council? If not, let's open up the mics again, or the lines, I guess. While we're waiting for that.
The lines are unmuted.
Okay, lines are unmuted. The folks in Cedar Rapids, it took about 10 years by the time they finally recovered from that flood, and then they get hit even worse than we did by the derecho. I feel so sorry for those people downtown.
Yeah, certainly, these projects do take time. Councilor Thompson, I think that's something that we realize with, with a lot of development. You know, people don't always realize how long we work on projects in advance of things actually coming to be. And so that's quite normal in a lot of the day-to-day. We wish it all could happen overnight with the snap of a finger, but that's just not quite how things come together. So we take advantage of what we can on the schedules that we can and try to plan ahead, knowing that there will always be work that's needed to be done. And so although some stuff will get taken care of before that, we know that there will still be a need in the future.
Your Honor, if I may have one more question?
You may.
Michelle, so if we give you go-ahead to pursue this, we could be on the line for half a million dollars on this.
Right.
We don't know if those other players are gonna come into play, and we have to match this $500,000.
Correct, and that's...
If we give you direction tonight, we're saying we're gonna fund anywhere from $1 to half a million.
Correct. We are, what I would propose is that we do a resolution on your next meeting so that it can be acted on, so that Diana can take that into consideration in budget prepping. But yes, we would be looking for a match commitment. I, I would propose up to the $500,000 so that we don't go through the work, and if those other funding sources don't come to be, that we have that available and we don't miss out on that opportunity.
You can't come, you and Julie can't come to us with the locked-in money of the other funding sources so we can commit to an exact dollar figure?
You know, we certainly have talked about timeline and application rounds of some of those other sources, and we'll be starting on that quick, or we're not gonna wait till after we know if we're awarded. Those will be things that are starting sooner rather than later. And so hopefully, by the time maybe we have some budget, maybe we'll have a more refined number. But knowing that those scopes are still, have time to take, we don't know what the full project will look like until all the scopes are developed for each of the properties. And so there's just a lot of variables out there that we're gonna have to work through that process. And so certainly, we'll be trying to engage money. And I think, you know, Julie did include in her information some of those sources that we will be, you know, requesting from. But I, I think in a, you know, that's up to you as a council, certainly, which way you want to go. But my, my recommendation would be to consider the full amount for that project. If, if you're not looking for that, it does put some additional pressure on getting other sources to work out in order to move forward.
The, the way that I would frame that is that really, tonight, we're looking for a resolution to be placed on the next meeting, which gives basically, Michelle, the ability to say, the council is committed, this is a project that we're moving forward with, and therefore, we would like to apply for some grant funds, knowing that the city is going to be in on, on the $500,000 match.
Other council questions or comments? Otherwise, let's open this one up to...
We've already...
Oh, we did, didn't we?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I just want to say, I'm so reluctant, I love the idea, but I'm so reluctant of moving numbers. You know, I like fixed numbers. I, I don't want to, I guess, my gut feeling is I don't want to commit. That's, you know, I mean, we've been stung on a couple other grant applications recently that we thought we had. So I guess I just, I guess I'm just, I wish I knew a number, you know, less than $500,000.
Well, and certainly, I mean, like I said, certainly, the council, it's your discretion as to how much you would want to commit. That is, my recommendation as staff would be to be willing to do the full match amount.
But she can't apply until she has guaranteed match from all the sources.
Correct.
And the IDEA doesn't care where the sources come from.
They, they do care. They will ask for a confirmation of commitment of the sources, but yes.
But they don't care. I mean, they just confirm it, they don't care what organization's going forward.
Yeah, I think for what we are looking for at this point, as Jessica mentioned, kind of the ability to, to go before those other funders, knowing that we do have a commitment from the city to participate in the program, as well as the idea that it's worth moving forward and spending that money on the architectural design work to get the application supported. Because it is a significant investment of those dollars to work with property owners. If we don't think that we can pull together the matching funding, then we have to think about where is our time and resources best spent. And so that's, that's the idea of coming before you at this point in time. We realize it's early, and we don't have all, all of the details in order. But I think that it's the, the best thing for us to do in preparation.
Other questions?
Well, I guess this leads to another one, if I may. Jessica, is the downtown TIF, can we use that money for this?
Yeah, so I mean, if you want to certify debt, I mean, that's the thing, is you're going to have to certify debt, which could be that you have a grant award where the city's commitment is X. So that would be something where you could certify it. But let's, example would be if we don't get a notification until September of 2021, you can certify that as TIF debt in November, December 1st of 2021, and then it becomes available to you, that money becomes available to you in the next fiscal year.
You don't have a balance out there right now of downtown TIF?
We do. I don't know what the current balance is, and I do know that, I think our concern with allocating that fully would be that then you take away any available funds for the facade grant. That would be extra replenishing. As both Julie and Michelle said, we want people to move forward on their own, where they have code compliance and facade grant projects that are smaller kind of things that really don't maybe fit this grant. And so I don't want to take that away as a resource for people to pursue those smaller projects. So there'd be a fine balancing act to do with that one.
And again, we don't make the commitment, we don't spend the money if we don't get the commitment from the owners that they will spend their money to do the improvement of downtown?
Right, certainly, if we don't have the owner participation or we're not funded, you know, those are funds and then don't get spent. So there is a lot that's up in the air that we won't know until something finally matures. But, you know, this is kind of the first step.
I don't entertain a motion to direct staff to move forward with the grant application process.
I move that we move forward.
Is there a second?
Second.
I will second.
Okay. Thank you. I think we've had enough discussion. I don't see anybody raising a hand, so let's go ahead and take a vote on this one.
Martin? Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Sue Cahill, unmute, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Very good. Staff has direction on that one as well. Our third discussion item, and then is the Airport Master Lease Agreement.
Justin Nichol, Public Works Director. There's a memo in your packet with the upcoming construction of a new terminal and hangar at the airport. Staff thought wise to ask council for the ability to renegotiate a new lease of our airport facilities. The current lease was approved in May of 2009 and runs for a period of 15 years. It does include a clause that offers the current lessee the first right of refusal. And our airport manager has indicated that he's still interested in continuing management of our airport. So staff would recommend or would ask council to authorize negotiation of a new lease for our airport facilities. Can I answer any questions?
Are there any?
I would move that we accept the resolution approving Airport Master Lease Agreement by and between Marshalltown Aviation, Inc. and the City of Marshalltown.
Thanks, Ms. Cahill. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second. Martin.
Very good. Any further discussion? I suppose we should unmute for ten again.
The lines are unmuted, Your Honor.
Roll call.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Very good. Staff has direction on that one as well. We're to our fourth and final discussion item, which is the derecho debris cleanup and compost facility fees.
Again, Justin Nichol, Public Works Director. Our crews have been working, collecting debris since the derecho occurred on, on August 10th, including overtime most of those weeks. Current information out to our residents is that, oh, I should correct myself, starting this week, we will not use any further overtime of our city crews to collect debris from the terrorist, from the terrorists. We will continue to collect debris on demand, which we're asking citizens with vegetative debris on the curb to call the Public Works number, the engineering office, 754-5734, to schedule a collection. Our plan is currently to have the street crew work one day a week, each week, to go and collect debris so that our street crews can return to other duties that have yet to occur. Line painting, maintenance of our gravel roads, pothole maintenance, levee maintenance, street sweeping, crack sealing, sign replacements, things like that. Our compost facility has also been available free of charge since the derecho. The compost facility is staffed by seasonal employees, and our typical season ends anytime between Thanksgiving and Christmas. Some things in our memo to, for the council to consider is that future debris brought into the compost facility will not be FEMA-eligible for reimbursement. We are seeing some debris that is green, so a staff can roll up on a site and figure out what's been freshly trimmed and what's been sitting on the ground for two or three weeks, waiting for our crews to come and pick it up. And that we also would need to adjust our hours once daylight savings time occurs to make sure that the compost facility is safe for the public and for our employees. We do pay approximately $600 per week in wages, not including benefits for the attendant and not including the street department employee that works down there to continually move the debris so that we can compost in an efficient manner. I would remind the council that the compost is a deficit fund each year. I looked at our balances today, and that would be a continuing occurrence for this coming fiscal, or this fiscal year. So if we are to continue operations, it's quite possible that we will need to find other funds to fund the compost facility. Are there questions or discussion items that, oh, and I should then get to the recommendation. Public Works staff recommends ending on-demand call-in debris cleanup by October 30th of this year, and we would recommend charging compost fees again starting November 1st of this year, and certainly would not object to any date sooner than that. Is there a discussion or questions that I can answer or engage in?
Any comments or questions?
Your Honor, I have a question.
Ms. Cahill, go ahead.
Justin, what is the typical cutoff time that your, the compost facility shuts down for the season?
Usually, Counselor Cahill, that happens between Thanksgiving and Christmas. I believe Christmas is the latest that it's occurred in my seven... Christmas is the latest that it's occurred in my seven seasons tenure. Usually would be weather, weather-dependent between Thanksgiving and Christmas as to when we would close.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Ms. Thompson?
Your Honor, I also have another statement.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Cahill.
Is it me or someone else?
Ms. Cahill has the mic.
Say it again. Thank you. I have to admit that I have some damages to my property that happened during the derecho that I have not been able to take care of as of this point. I would, I have looked at some people who are doing the tree cut-down facilities and there have been some issues involved in the city, people who have basically pipe-gouged. So I am hoping that by waiting for my personal property, that I will find someone who is responsible and respectful of the city's pricing range that we are working with. So I still have property that needs to be brought down from the derecho. I guess I would hope that I would be able to use the city facilities and use them at no cost because of the, just because of the facilities that we have, that not everyone got their trees cut down by the end of August. So I do hope that we can provide some other resources for people who have not been able to, be able to disperse their property as of this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Thompson? Justin, first question is, why will future debris not be FEMA eligible?
Just because the way that FEMA works.
The time period?
There'll be a cutoff of, we had our first meeting with FEMA today and you have to identify your damages within a certain window, usually 60 days. So there'll be a cutoff point here where it won't be eligible.
Before you ask your next question, that reminds me of something I need to share with everybody that I learned at four o'clock today at the FEMA trailer with Congressman Finkenhour. The deadline, the drop-dead deadline to apply for the FEMA individual grants is October 19. And I asked what time of day. Well, online, you can do it until a minute before midnight. If you're calling on the phone, you'd be smart to make it by 6 o'clock. And the discussion, Finkenhour asked the FEMA officials a question about, well, how about the people that think that they're covered by insurance and it turns out they aren't later. As long as you get the application in now, you've met the deadline. If you miss the deadline and that happens to you, you are without any luck. And so I wanted to take this forum as a chance to tell people, if you haven't applied for FEMA yet and there's even a question about whether you should or not, please do it. It's still easy. They're still out there until Sunday at 6:00, then they move to the Muskewake, Second Fox facility, the parking lot near the casino. And they're still available online, still available by a toll-free number. But please, for those that are out there that haven't applied yet, consider doing that now so you don't miss the deadline. Thanks. Next question.
Yeah, that was a good point. And they're there till when here in town?
I'm sorry?
When are they here till?
Till 6:00 on Sunday, I believe is what I heard. And I think literally they moved the trailer and the staff over to Tama County.
Saturday.
Is it Saturday? Uh-oh. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Your Honor. So Justin, I ask that this be put on the agenda for discussion because I think the people of Marsh Town have been through enough. And I think if, I guess my feeling is, I can't speak for the council, but my feeling is, if you need money in your budget to cover the overtime and stuff, I'm willing to pull it from a local option sales tax to make this right with your department. I mean, I get that. But I mean, we just gave direction to housing that we're willing to commit $500,000 for eight businesses when this impact, you know, if we keep it free for the rest of the season, you know, whatever your normal season is, and if we obligate you to do one day a week pickup on-call, and hopefully that will diminish over time.
We're seeing that already. It's greatly diminished.
And I really don't care if it's green or not. You know, I'm not going to nitpick with them. You know, I think they've been through enough. And if they want to trim the mulberry bush in the backyard and throw it out there, you know what? I'm okay with that. They've been through enough. And in the big scheme of things, it's not going to cost us $500,000 or $2 million for Merle Hibbs or the federal government $3 million for Edgewood. I mean, this is something I think, I look at this as not so much as a burden on you, and I hope it isn't. I mean, I realize it is, but it isn't. It's just something that the citizens are asking for and something we can do to give back. That's the only reason I wanted on here, was just to discuss this, that, I mean, like I said, the tornado and then the derecho, and I drove, I borrowed my brother's truck and drove around. There's a lot of hanging limbs. I know Gabe and I talked about that over in Second Ward, where I did some of my driving around. There's, and like Sue said, it's, a lot of the tree companies, from what I understand, went to Cedar Rapids because they can make more money. I mean, this timeframe just isn't working for a lot of people. So I think we just, it's a gesture is the reason I wanted on. That's what I'm, that's what I'm hoping that we can come to tonight.
I guess I may, I agree with you and I'll take the point, also to point out to our citizens who are listening, don't be price gouged on that either because our prices for the tree contractor to bring it to our compost facility are not exorbitant in the first place. If a tree contractor tells you they're giving you a discount, that's BS. It might cost them $30 or $40 to take it, not 500, not 1,000, not something like that. So don't be taken advantage of, I would recommend to our citizens as well.
I guess that's all, I guess all that I'm asking is, let's do something good for the citizens and hopefully you can work with us, we can work with you and your department. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. The guy running the machinery out there is pretty impressive. I've taken 37 loads of pickup debris, tree debris out there, and I've just really been impressed by the way they keep that moving. Other comments?
Oh, just, Your Honor, that, sorry. I just wanted to say I too am in favor of extending it through the end of the season. And I would remind everybody, we had a beautiful Christmas last year. It was like 50 degrees or something crazy. So it would be a welcome break if we could get great fall weather and get it cleaned up. We're often talking about cleanup around town and this is really, it seems like an easy win, I agree, to give people a little breathing room. And maybe with the holiday time, kids home from college from Thanksgiving on, maybe they can help pitch in. Thanks.
The sad but true comment is, there aren't going to be as many leaves this year either. Holy cow. I saw the dog park was open too. That had to take a lot of manpower to get that open. If there, I guess we had to open this to the public comment too. Let's go ahead and go to the 10 seconds.
The lines are unmuted, Your Honor.
Thank you. Nine, eight, yep, there we go, 10 seconds. All right. Thank you, Justin.
So I guess I just want clarification based on what the staff recommended versus what the council is suggesting.
I think we need a motion to approve what staff recommended or a different motion to...
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that the compost facility remain free for the rest of the season for 2020, and also that the pickup, the call-in pickup, would be free to the citizens and that you would not differentiate from what's green and what isn't. Because a cut, a broken limb can still pull moisture. So really, you don't know if it's true or not.
I will second that.
Okay. We got a second by Cahill. Thank you.
Point of clarification, so the end of the season for compost fees, the resolution with regards to uncalled debris cleanup timeline, is that also to the end of the season that you're asking for? Are you asking for?
Same, same timeline. I gotta believe it's going to be cut down to probably one a week, you know, in another month.
I would agree with that. I might, I might suggest that we find a definitive, something that I find that happens quite often every season is we have short notice of the weather changes and we say, okay, compost is closing at the end of the week. So if we, December 1st, December 15th, something to that effect, I would like to have a definitive date. Otherwise, I feel we're going to have lots of complaints about, well, I didn't know compost was closing in 48 hours. Could it be December 1st? Could we offer that?
If we say December 1st and we get 24 inches of snow on Thanksgiving, does that create the same problem?
It will, yes. It'll also create the problem with our crews of using the same trucks for debris removal that we would for snow removal as well. So I would like to have a actual defined hard date, not just till the end of the season.
December 1st.
My recommendation would be that that really be left up to staff who's directing their resources and that'd be the call of the Public Works Director to be able to determine when that end of the season is, based on weather and other events.
I'm okay with that as long as the end of the season isn't tomorrow.
That won't occur.
Okay. That was a Bethany joke, Justin.
Well, we've been in that, we've been in that situation too before where it's snowed and then we don't actually close it because that's, it's kind of a freak of nature.
Are we specifying how much time that the street department spends picking up? Is it still one day or are you saying forever?
And if you need overtime, we got it.
I like that plan that he's, that Justin has in place, that if one day a week or if the calls get small enough, he goes to one day every two weeks. I leave that, I'm more comfortable with leaving that to his judgment than the cutoff date, no offense. I mean, that's, the cutoff date's what got us here in the first place.
It is, yep. And like I said, it's a, it's a hard...
Yeah. Maybe you could step down to a pickup, you know, as it gets later on, instead of, instead of one of the plows.
I would second that, that we provide the services as long as they are needed and following what Justin has suggested. I appreciate that.
I'll assume that we've still got the motion and second as discussed here. Let's call for public comment again.
Thanks, Justin.
The lines are unmuted, Your Honor.
Very good. Roll call.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
No.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. That one carried as well. And that takes us to the last thing on the agenda, which is public comment. Members of the public may make comments on any item not on the agenda during this time. You have to approach the mic, state your name and address. Limit the comments to three minutes unless longer is authorized by me. Speak directly to the mayor and council as a whole. Don't engage in, and the council, consellers and mayor shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by members of the public and no action can be taken on them in order to comply with the open meetings laws. With that said, the microphone is open. If anybody present wishes to stand up and walk to it, and that, okay. I see somebody coming, then we'll open it up to the phone folks as well.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. Recently, there was some city council action, court action required for the acquisition of a church that's owned by a dead person. And you had to take this, it's on Nevada or Boone, about 500 block. There is a parcel, Lackey Terrace, 7th Street and Boone, which is owned by a person who's been dead since 1926. It surrounds a pocket neighborhood and the middle courtyard. So if there are any nuisance problems with the driveways being broken, unplowed, things like that, the common sidewalk areas, the city's got no jurisdiction to enforce it because there's no person to enforce it upon because he's dead. You might want to look at that parcel and see what you can do to straighten that out so that the property owners, there's 10 homes there, one of them is in lead abatement, can maybe be deeded their portion of that common area so that they can take care of it and maintain it. Maybe put it in an association if they need to, that's up to them. But I just want it back on the tax rolls and be able to have nuisance enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's open it up to the public.
The lines are unmuted, Your Honor.
My watch says that was 10 seconds, so that will conclude that. And the meeting is now adjourned at the time of 7:16 PM. Thank you for your input.